Going to open up the workshop meeting of the city council meeting. We'll move right into city manager's report and issues raised at prior council meetings.
None at this time.
Special event application, Lucia.
The first application before you is for the 9th Annual Family Day to be held at Donovan Hamery Courts. The applicant did request a sponsorship from the city, but unfortunately we're not in a position to do that. So I'm just requesting that they be allowed to use the courts for the event. Next is the Special Olympics Triathlon, one more try. Asbury Park Bear Weekend to be held on August 10th. Asbury Park 12 Hours of House Music Festival. This will be ending at 10:00 PM. High Focus Centers Beach Bash Fundraiser. New Jersey Cycle Nation. Mind Travel, the Silent Piano Concert is requesting two dates, June 29th and August 24th on 7th Avenue Beach. The Promenade of Mermaids is requesting to hold their parade on the boardwalk on June 29th, and then the judging portion of that event will take place in Bradley Park on June Surf 24 will be held in Springwood Park on July 13th. Deliverance Temple Church will be hosting Asbury Park Day on June 22nd. Recreation Committee will be having a fashion show at the Senior Center on July 27th. Asbury Parks Got Talent, April 27th in Springwood Park. Asbury Park Santa Run on December 7th. Thanks For Giving Plunge, November 16th. Global Mala on September 15th. Annual Volleyball Beach Tournament on August 3rd. Bonfires on the Beach for the 2019 season. And last but not least, Jersey Pride Parade and Festival the first weekend in June. Are there any questions on the events?
I have a question about the Mind Travel. So people will have to pay to get on the beach for that?
No, it's after the beach closes. It's held in the evening.
During the summer?
Yes.
So people who want fishermen or people who want to go on the beach to fish, what happens with them?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Fishermen or anybody else that wants to go on the beach can't go on the beach?
No, they can. Yeah, they can. The beach isn't closed or anything, they just take a small portion.
Correct.
No, they don't.
Okay.
Is, where is the music festival going to take place, Bradley?
Bradley Park.
Bradley Park?
Uh huh, yes.
And the Asbury Park Bear Weekend in August, what streets are being closed off for that one?
Steiner Place?
Okay. Great. Thank you.
One other question, Cycle Nation, they're gonna have, they have a liquor, they're gonna get a liquor license for that?
Uh, yes. Okay. Thank you.
We'll move on to items to be presented. The first item is Madison Asbury Retail LLC, quarter renovations of the 4th Avenue Pavilion.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. My name's George McHale, I'm an attorney, I represent Madison Asbury Retail LLC. We're here tonight looking for conceptual approval from the board. We're in the middle of the process to get site plan approval for the 4th Avenue Pavilion. That requires that we go to the TRC, and then to here, and then to the planning board. We did appear at the Technical Review Committee on January 18th, and that, as a result of that meeting, a report was generated by Michelle Alonza, which I'm sure that you have. We have presented plans to you. I think you have 11 by eight and a half, so I have larger versions if you would like to see those. Mayor, would you like larger copies?
I'm good, thank you.
Is everybody good?
Oh, I'll take the larger copies.
So you may remember that we were here late 2017, early 2018, in reference to a similar project. We've had to amend that project, which necessitated us coming back. So it's very similar, there are some changes. I have Kevin Patterson from Madison Asbury Retail here, he's going to do, give you an overview of why we need to make the changes and what those changes are. We have Mike Gantberg from MMA Architects, he's going to show you the plans and go over them. And Bob Curley, the engineer from Mazur, he's here. We don't intend to have Mr. Curley say anything unless you, of course, have questions for him, so. That's my introduction, so I'd let Kevin take it from here and let you know why we need to make these changes and basically what some of those changes are, the major changes.
Hi, good evening. Since we were here last, basically we've gone to market with the prior design, searching for tenants, and the feedback that we've received, basically, the second floor space of the prior design was intended for an office work share type tenant. Everyone that we've spoken to in that realm has said that they either want a floor plate that is twice as big, or half the size of what we're proposing. We have however had a lot of interest from entertainment style operators, things like arcades, or shuffleboard, or ping pong operators. So the prior approval was contingent, it had a roof deck that was contingent upon only being used of the roof deck by the office tenants. Now they're realizing that that use of that second floor, that's not entirely feasible because the market won't support it. We're looking for approval of both office use or an entertainment use on the second floor, and eliminating the roof deck is the biggest change, because we can't guarantee that that future tenant would be in line with the limitations of the prior approval. And again, the approval of the second floor for both office and/or entertainment use, depending on how that lease shapes up. As a result of that, and the feedback that we've gotten from the ground floor, potential tenants, we've streamlined the building's core to make it more efficient, to create more leasable area where tenants wanted to have it. There are some minor changes to the facade, locating some doors that align with how tenants wanted to shape their interior floor plans, but you'll find that the majority of the design is generally the same. I think there are sort of 17 points of change that if you look at the renderings, as well as Mike will go through in more depth, kind of each of those steps, but generally the elimination of the roof deck. I think we have four mural panels on the north and south sides of the building, whereas we previously only had two, one on each face. We've tried to expand upon what the council and city planning liked previously, and just to make the building more realistic with what's feasible for tenants in the marketplace. So, Mike, if you'd like to...
Okay, as Kevin mentioned, there were 17 changes. Some higher, some not, some higher. We'll go down, you can go down a list if you want, move quickly. The first one was the stair layout at the Ocean Avenue. Deck outside here, that's a bit on the patio. What we did was, we had a few different numbers, stairs coming up to the deck, we reduced more stairs, located near the entrance to the tenant entrance. That was one of the changes. The second change here, we didn't have access off Ocean Avenue to the basement area, due to the fact that we're not going to be, we're not having major entrances from the, what we call the open arcade, we're not going to be going down to the basement. So what we need to do is introduce the access off the ocean avenue. So, again, is also a change, so you can see that in your own plans, the additional location of the entrance into the basement. Public arcade, then we're taking, we're more or less taking that out. We want to make it more flexible for potential, for one tenant to occupy that space, and therefore access the second floor, so that they could have the area that was the public arcade, you would access, and then have occupy that part, and the whole second floor.
One point of clarification there, though. We're looking for approval to maintain either the public arcade, or to contribute that to the second floor tenant, if that's the way that that lease shapes. If they need a ground floor lobby, that would become their kind of catchment lobby to go upstairs. Or if it's multiple tenants upstairs, it would remain kind of a central elevator lobby for the building with the retail on the sides opening into it.
Right, so there's, they'll open it up for options for either one tenant, option second floor, or multiple tenants. So that would be, if there are multiple tenants up there, then of course that would be more of a public access way. And again, we rearranged the monumental stair up to the second floor, and also introduced a larger elevator to the second floor. Again, we're not going down to the basement, so the basement's not occupied. The only thing that's going to be down in the basement is the existing lifeguard area, that's going to remain the same. Everything there is going to, not going to be altered, it's going to be the same. So down in the basement, not occupied, but a small portion with the existing lifeguard station, lifeguard area, that's going to stay the same. Other elements on the, on the first floor, we had lace flooring that illuminated the basement, and also we have one on the second floor that illuminated the first floor. We're going to eliminate that also. And then again, it allows more flexibility for tenants occupying that space. The entrance ways here have been altered also, we had overhead doors here, we created more open breechway, again, we've eliminated that, we use regular double door storefronts, and again, it can allow for more flexibility for future tenant arrangement. Where I mentioned the end, monumental stair. Again, the second, the first floor, we changed it slightly from the original design, again, just to facilitate more flexibility for future tenant spaces, and allow for more flexibility. On the second floor, if you can see, here we had, let me turn here, these balcony areas have gotten a little larger, they're a triangular shape configuration, that also has changed, it was a lot smaller than the original design, so we made that a little bit larger on these ends here. The roof level, as Kevin has mentioned, has been eliminated, so there's no more rooftop deck, and there's no support spaces that services the rooftop deck. We had bathrooms up there, we had storage spaces, those all have been eliminated. And consequently, the stairs, the existing stairs that were on the north and south ends of the building, no longer extend to the roof, because there's no reason to have that there now. So that's been eliminated. Access to the roof, there's an existing roof hatch, we're going to be renovating that, and that's the way you access the roof. Up on the roof, you're going to have mechanical equipment space, we're going to have a screen here, you see on the rooftop roof plan, a screen, and then you see the roof hatch there. That's the only purpose for the roof, is to house the new mechanical equipment and with the new mechanical screen. And again, the, on our original plan, we had chunks of composite wood screening, we're going to go with the metal, the metal system that's similar to Fifth Avenue, that's been proposed, Fifth Avenue later. And again, we'll have it painted so that it's not, you know, too orange, we try to have that as low key as possible. On the elevations here, we reduce the, again, we had brick throughout, we reduced the number of areas for brick. We're introducing stucco and brick. The brick is going to be mainly located accessing the two ends on the north and south, stair towers, we might have some within the tenant spaces, but the majority of the brick will be at the ends, the north ends here, where we're going to be accessing mural locations. And then the rest will be stucco, and it's all going to be white, white brick and white stucco. And that was one of the points for the TRC meeting. We had introduced the option of white, red brick, but TRC members, I think they made the right choice, wanted to go with white, so we're going to go with white brick and white stucco. Cannibian locations, basically the same, the same colors, we haven't changed anything. These colors were approved at the last TRC meeting. The only thing that's changed here is the entryway. Again, we've changed that to allow for more flexibility, same reason we had mentioned on plans, that allow for more flexibility for optional tenant, one tenant or several tenants, but we made it more or less the same as these other tenant entrances, so that we can have that flexibility. Again, we're introducing a, we call an art wall, art, monumental art, we call it monumental artistic signage element, and these are on both stair locations. These of course would be, these are just to show an example of what it would look like, obviously, whether the tenant's going to be up on, above the second floor, or predominant tenant on the first floor, would have their option of designing that, and of course that would be future planning board.
And basically as a point of reference, the intent there, similar to the big copper lobster that Lingosta Lounge has on the side of the building, and the neon pinball on Oars that Silverball has on 3rd Avenue Pavilion. In the past, we've had these kind of artistic signage elements where it's an artistic expression of brand without lettering stating the brand's logo that kind of conveys who the tenant is. So that's, independently, we'd be going for approval, we're just saying as a placeholder that that's the zone where that would occur, based on future approvals.
And again, you can see on the north and south elevations, we're introducing art mural locations for the wall, and these will be changeable, they'll have different artists at different times, and that will facilitate, you know, artistic activity in Asbury. And again, these would be something that would be manageable, and another artist placing their art in these locations. As far as lighting, we're showing linear lights to illuminate these murals, and then in the front here, we're introducing a sign band, and again, that would be illuminated by linear lighting. Again, this was a little bit different from, from the previous design, we really accented a building signage band, it's a little more prominent than the last design. I think a lot more successful as far as, you know, quantity of different tenant spaces. And again, we're also introducing blade signs, that was also in the other design, and you can see it in the side, side elevations, you notice how they protrude out. And that'll also be led by some spotlight, spotlights that are also wall mounted. For general lighting, we're introducing oostneck lighting for each column location along with the sides here, and the sides, elevations in the front and rear. And that's basically it, so we've just, I think we've addressed a lot of the, the whole issues that were brought up at the TRC meeting. If there's any questions?
The balconies are being increased.
Yes.
From what to what? Or what percentage even?
It's not, we're talking about maybe, maybe 10% if that...
I think primarily, they went from being rectangular to being angled on the side. Do you know what the square footage difference is between?
I think it's like, maybe five, five, maybe five square feet. It's not a whole lot, it's more or less a configuration change.
Since there could be restaurants on the second floor now, and balconies could be used, is there going to be music on the balconies?
Not specifically music, I mean, I imagine there'd be music inside of the premises, we wouldn't play it on the balconies to conflict with, you know, the tenants on the ground floor usually have exterior speaker systems, it would be too much.
They're not large enough for that kind of activity, there won't be dancing or anything.
But it's large enough to put a couple of tables for dinner?
I would say maybe two, maybe.
Okay, no problem. The roof...
It's more of a public area.
The roof screening, how, how high is the screening for the roof?
That'd be six foot high.
Six foot high?
It's similar, very similar to the 5th Avenue Pavilion.
Okay.
It's up there now, on the addition.
And generally the intent, you can see from pedestrian height.
Yeah.
It's low enough to be screened.
Yeah, you don't really see it from the street.
So you won't see it from the street or the boardwalk?
Right, it's mostly...
These are, these are model perspectives, and they're pretty accurate as far as when you're standing, you're standing here, you really won't see that. But in the elevations, you'll see, they're about six foot, six foot high.
If, if restaurants did go on the second floor, and you had to put in exhaust systems that had to go up so many more feet, then would the screening have to go higher?
We would keep it within just the level of the screen.
Okay, thank you. The last question, I'm just trying to want here someplace. Where's your storage for garbage and recycling?
Those would be within the tenant spaces. As the tenant spaces are fitted out, each tenant space would have their location within their, within their tenant space to house their trash, and then the trash they even take it out. Usually there are, it's, I want to say refrigerated, but a cool space, okay?
Thank you.
So would these murals have to go to the public art committee for approval? Okay.
Yeah, and then the...
It's in, it's in the document.
The previous approval.
Right, okay.
Okay.
That's all we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll skip to review of agenda items for this evening's meeting.
Consent agenda. Consent agenda resolutions, 2019-89 is a special event application. 2019-90 is the refund of overpayment of taxes, and 91 is a dedication by Ryder for a $500 donation that the fire department has received. Are there any questions on the three consent agenda items? Seeing none, we're going to move over to the individual resolutions. 2019-92 amends the temporary budget appropriations for this fiscal year. 2019-93 is the payment of bills. 2019-94 is amending a contract for the installation of playground equipment, this is at the Banks Avenue Playground. The playground is going to be redone with a new gazebo and new playground amenities. 2019-95 is entering for the city to purchase from the Omni Partners Government Purchasing Alliance. This is for one of the capital items, which you'll approve hopefully in the next meeting or two for a DPW vehicle. This co-op is actually $30,000 cheaper than some of the other co-ops that we found for the DPW truck, so we're recommending that we enter into this co-op. Resolutions 96, 97, and 98 are concession awards for surf lessons, paddle boats, and the rentals of umbrellas, beach chairs, and other items. As per the local public contracts law governing concessions and competitive contracting, the recommendation has been posted on the city's website at least 48 hours in advance and provided to the governing body. Resolution 2019-99 is an award of printing services. This was a rebid, as all the previous bids had to be rejected. Resolution 2019-100 is a mechanical resolution for authorizing ammunition and targets for the police department. Resolution 101 is for the purchase of items in the sewer plant, replacing some broken equipment that is at the end of its useful life. 2019-102 is appointing architecture services through the fair and open process, we're recommending DMR and NETA. Resolution 2019-103 is a second amendment to the redevelopment agreement between us and Interfaith, just does three specific things. It identifies payment process for the environmental cleanup that was undertaken on behalf of the city. It authorizes the execution of certain permits that Interfaith is requesting to receive additional funding, and it also allows Interfaith flexibility to increase the number of affordable housing units. It will not decrease from the approved plan, it actually, Interfaith has asked that they may be able to do additional affordable housing. Resolution 2019-104 is an amendment, is granting amendment for conceptual approval to Asbury Partners regarding the summer experience. This is for the governing body, acting as redevelopment agency, referring this to the planning board as the city has done in the past. Real quick, the introduction ordinance is the city planners here, if there's any questions. And for the second reading, we are asking that you vote down that ordinance. We found that there was a major technical glitch in the final printing of it through our software, it looks like, so we're asking that you vote it down, so that we can just restart the process. Is there any questions on the individual resolutions? Seeing none, we will move, if I can get TV's to turn on, to the presentation.
Is your phone?
Uh-uh. Here it is.
So what is, is the proceeding, is the presentation for the north end boardwalk. This is the conceptual plan and a little bit of history where we've been. This presentation and the subsequent conceptual plan will be posted on the website in the next day or so. And we're just going to move on from there, we have the city engineer and staff with us tonight if there's any questions. The one thing I want to stress is that this is a conceptual plan, and it may change according to engineering standards, DEP, and other regulatory bodies, but this is a conceptual plan from listening to the public comments over the last couple of months. So how are we defining just this north end boardwalk project? It's the boardwalk width and the meandering items, improvement to the Fisherman's Lot, site amenities, creation and improvement to dunes, stormwater and vegetation management, and the existing playground. Basically, everything that is in this project is, we're just lumping it, is called the north end boardwalk project. This is originally from the 2002 waterfront redevelopment plan. This is, language is copied and pasted directly from the plan. This is a history of the CAFRA approvals to the plan. This is taken directly from a CAFRA letter to the city. The green pointer didn't work, so, sorry. But here you'll see, these are all the CAFRA permits. If anyone is interested in obtaining these permits, the process is to... If anyone is interested in obtaining these permits, the process is to Oprah DEP with these numbers or try to find them online and they will provide them to you. So getting into a brief history, in November of 2018, at a city council meeting, the council requested I-STAR to cease and desist the construction of the CAFRA-approved plan. I-STAR complied with that request. And we began to discuss what a quote-unquote "better plan" would be for this project. In December of last year, we began to a public comment process soliciting input for proposed changes to the North End design. There was a hundred and sixty comments received via paper, online, and email, and then we all sat down and reviewed them, the city and I-STAR. And a consensus of the comments resulted in new designs to be presented in the Charette Forum, which was held at Thurgood Marshall School in January. From that, we had five exhibits, four specific to the North End Boardwalk project and one specific to what quote-unquote "what Bradley Cove could become." During this process, we had over three hundred and fifty comments. We received, we reviewed them, and then that took shape of what is the next draft of the conceptual plan. And since we're posting this on the city's website for people to review, what we, what I did was just throw the exhibits from that Charette for reference points into this presentation. Yes. So we began to meet in December, moving into, sorry, January into February. This conceptual plan was presented to CAFRA. And that is incredibly important in this process because we wanted to make sure we were going down the right path with where we were going with the public comments. If CAFRA had said, no, this isn't going to work, we would have had to tweak some things. So we met with CAFRA in the, in Trenton, members from the city and I-STAR for about half hour, forty-five minutes, and presented them an overview of what we're doing. And CAFRA had no objections to the conceptual plan. So that brings us to tonight. The highlights of this conceptual plan, and I'm sorry this is a little small, I didn't have time to tweak it, but again, this will be on the city's website. No drainage into Deo Lake. This is going to remove the, the outfall pipe. It creates a detention basin and rain gardens for stormwater management. All stormwater will stay on-site through infiltration systems. Similar boardwalk width to before construction. And I'll get to that in a second. Additional bicycle parking. Meandering boardwalk from Eighth to Fisherman's Lot, which is a smaller area, which is a, is a cost consideration. Reinforce existing dunes. The playground equipment remains in the current location. The previously approved CAFRA plan moved the playground. Continuation of DEP, previous approved impervious coverage for Fisherman's Lot. This in part, DEP was very happy with keeping the stormwater on. And DEP had improved, had approved previously through CAFRA, the impervious coverage. Free parking in Fisherman's Lot. This is something the city has always maintained, but we wanted to stress it again tonight. Relocating, relocation of Jetty Stone. The Jetty Stone was found underneath the boardwalk and the Deo Lake Commission requested for us to strategically use it, which we can accommodate. Year-round ADA accessible and gender-neutral bathrooms. Most importantly, this is a conceptual plan. If the plan says thirty feet, once engineering gets involved, it might be twenty-eight feet, twenty-nine feet, thirty-two feet. The width is going to change, some of the, some of the design might change as we go through an engineering formal process. So with that. And again, this is a small, and the pointer wasn't working, but here you can see is the existing, the boardwalk built back to the existing levels. This is the playground, which does not move at all. Here is an additional access path, an improvement to the access path. Right here in this little corner is the gender-neutral and ADA-compliant bathrooms. Here is a switchback, so we don't have bicycles going all over the place, but it's an ADA-compliant tool. As you know, the city's been working with the Christopher Reeve Foundation for a lot of ADA improvements, and we wanted to make sure that every access is ADA-compliant as best as possible. Reinforce the existing dune structure that is here. Here is the relocation of the Jetty Stone on the far right corner. This is increasing the area of infiltration. This little brown spot here in the corner is emergency access and public, Department of Public Works access, so that we can get onto the beach in emergencies. The green is increased or improved infiltration, whether it's rain gardens or stormwater management. As you can see over here, along Deo Lake Drive, there is now the removal of the outfall from this parking lot. Everything in this parking lot will be graded to the green. There will be no stormwater management that leaves the parking lot. DEP was thrilled, for lack of a better term, with this idea and said that the city and I-STAR partnering with this hit a home run. And here you see we're actually expanding some of the, the green space. So this is the current conceptual plan from listening to public comments and DEP over the last few months. So the next steps, step in this would be us and I-STAR, us meaning the city and I-STAR, sitting down with engineering and planning and determining where the next steps of design are going to be. The goal is for construction to start in fall, preferably September, early October. We don't know of a completion date. We don't know of cost allocations or cost sharings. We have no idea what this is cost, is going to cost yet. We are not at this point. This is just a conceptual. But here, as you can, it's, when you blow this up, you can see this says fifty-four feet, but it's also going to be dependent on how we can make the herringbone fit with the boards. This will all be done in herringbone. Here is an additional walkway, which we're still determining what it could be, whether it's concrete or boards. But we're trying to be uniform throughout the entire area. Here you see one access point, two access points, and here is the third access point to the boardwalk into the beach. Did I miss anything?
There's an elevation difference between the larger boardwalk and the meandering boardwalk extension to the Fisherman's Parking Lot. So primarily, so because it's narrower, so someone with a bicycle doesn't come through and, you know, interfere with pedestrians walking back and forth from the parking lot. The restroom building location is shown, is approximate. We have not determined a final location. One of the considerations for that is the flood hazard elevation, so we need it to be elevated. But we're working out that exact location, you know, as the process moves forward.
So this is the, the quote-unquote "final conceptual" of where we're moving forward, listening to all the public comments. We'll continue with the meeting. There's only a couple more minutes left, but this will obviously be up for the next fifteen minutes until we start the seven o'clock meeting and for, you know, to look at. Thank you.
We'll move on to. We'll move on to matters by the city council.
So the Sunset Lake Commission is reviewing a master plan for Sunset Lake and Park. We did an open session in February to get comments from residents throughout the city. And on Tuesday, March 5th, we'll have a presentation of what those comments look like at seven o'clock here in council chambers. Also, if there's anyone interested in being in the St. Patrick's Day Parade, applications are still being accepted. I know quality of life is going to be in it, Sunset Lake Conservancy and some other organizations. So applications are available on the website, Asbury Park St. Patrick's Day. Thanks.
Tomorrow night, the Asbury Park School District is having their Black History Extravaganza. It's at Convention Hall. It starts at 5:30 and all are invited. And prior to that beginning, there's going to be a film called Down the Asbury, produced by the Asbury Park African-American Musical Heritage Project. So if you get there early, you'll get a chance to see it. And then on Friday, March 8th, the Asbury Park Recreation Committee is throwing another dance party at the senior center. It's from seven to eleven, and again, all are invited.
The Asbury Park Recreation Department is teaming up with the Asbury Park Library to do a book, a storytime at three o'clock, and the theme is Dr. Seuss. So three o'clock at the Asbury Park Library.
On what day?
Saturday, March 2nd. And the City of Asbury Park is hiring specials. To be a special one, the only thing that is required is a high school diploma or GED. To be a special two, you do need a current NJPTC. So you're going to see Eileen and I doing essentially door-to-door to try to get a cross-section of people to apply for being a special. We would, you know, request anyone that you think might be interested in applying or anyone who wants more information to contact the city. Okay?
Who's the special?
It's pre-cop. It's a pre-cop. It's the guy, it's the people who walk the boards without the guns.
Okay. Perfect.
But the, the special, the training you get as a special is, and don't quote me on this, I think they'll tell me, like eighty percent the cop training that you get, right? Am I saying that wrong?
Class one, class two.
Class two. So if you, if you do, if you become a class two, the amount of training that you get to be a class two is eighty, very close to being a regular cop.
That's it. Excuse me. As Yvonne mentioned, tomorrow night is the school district great event at the Paramount Theater. Also tomorrow night, it's like when it rains, it pours. There's two other great events in Asbury Park. At Langousta Lounge, the Christopher Reeve Foundation's having a meet and greet. So that's great. And at the Boy, at the Asbury Hotel at the same time, the Boys Club is doing the judging for the Boy or Girl of the Year from the Asbury Park Boys Club. They can go to the states and then hopefully to the nationals. So if you don't see us at one of them, don't think, ah, they're home in bed. There's like three events going on, so we're all trying to hit some of them. I mean, so, and again, please, everybody attend one of them. Three great events. Last Thursday, we had the Black History Celebration, the twentieth year. It was a fantastic event. I gotta say, without a doubt, the best in the county, if not the state. Anybody who went to it would agree. Anybody who didn't go to it can watch it on AP-TV. I just want to thank the people that made it happen. The city employees are Tamika Smith, Barbara Van Wagner, Carrie Genot, Gina Tomolo, Tyrone Vincent, Daniel Vidigam, Robert Lawton, Dave Crawford, and Eric Agder. And of course, the two people that do this every year and are the main backbone are Cassandra and Lisha. Many businesses and individuals in the city and outside of the city were very gracious with their donations to make this event happen. In the Berkeley Carteret, where we had between three hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty and four hundred people, and it was like packed. And I don't know how they're going to top next year because this, it was fantastic. So I'd like to thank the Berkeley Oceanfront Hotel, New Jersey Natural Gas, Madison Marquette, pastors Tracy and Lydell Akins, McManaman, Scotland, and Baumann, G-Gem Insurance Agency, Clark, Catanen, and Hens, Robert Bodnar from Razzle Dazzle Laundry, Antonio Johnson from AP-TV, and everybody else. And again, you can watch it on AP-TV, please do. Carolina Tool from the Stone Pony, Harry Hosler, Attorney at Law, the Asbury Park Fire Department, the Asbury Park Police Department, Eric Neimeth, Esther Pekarsky from Alphabet Schools, Fred Raffetto, Food Circus Supermarkets, McLeuns Restaurants, Initial Impact, Asbury Festival, and Beer Garden, Frank's Deli, Wegmans, T&amp;M. And again, it's up on AP-TV, and please watch it. It was outstanding. And I cannot thank everybody for doing such a good job. Thank you. Oh, yeah. And, and the, at, at the table, as usual, did the food, and it was ridiculously good as usual. So, and anybody who hasn't been at the table, Bond Street, try it out. Thank you.
Matters by the city attorney?
Nothing at this time.
At this time, we'll break until 7:00 PM.
Great.
Going to open up the regular meeting of the city council. Vocal, Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Councilmember Kendall. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please rise for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection, please. Flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God invisible with liberty and justice for all.
As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press to close the Mr. Ledger on January 2nd, 2019, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, Mayor Moore would like to make an appointment to the library board. His appointment would be Hector Palomo with an expiration of December 31st, 2019, who would be replacing a member who has recently resigned. This time, have a motion to open a meeting to the public, please.
Move it.
Second.
Each member who wishes to speak, please state your name and address for the record. Each member wishing to speak has three minutes to speak.
Thank you. Ernest Minoli, 400 Deo Lake Drive, Asbury Park. I would ask that the city manager and council not interrupt me. I just want to make my statements and leave. Thank you. I don't know how many people here are aware, but in 2002, around 2003, '04, the entire boardwalk was, I believe, sold for about $3 million. At the time they signed that redevelopment agreement, they, the Federal Bureau Investigation came in and arrested the city manager who signed it, arrested three or four of the board members, the council members, and arrested the mayor. A lot of them did three, four years, et cetera. Now, we're talking Terry Weldon, and, you know, it's amazing that people here look like, what is he talking about? Well, it's in the record. Operation Didrik. Right? Seventy people, all the way up to Secaucus, mayors, council, et cetera. So every time that you invoke that this is a valid contract from 2002 or '04, understand one thing. The minute Mr. Weldon signed it, he turned to his council members, he was being recorded, and he said, I'm a convicted felon, and that's the extent of it. And it's been, it's stuck. No one's challenged it now. Worse than that, the same city council, Ansel Graham Aaron, sits here now, right? Now, of course, they don't like to hear that, but in Long Branch, the first thing, after the corruption in Long Branch for 28 years, the first thing the new administration did was fire Ansel Graham Aaron. Now, we have Ansel Graham Aaron as our city attorney, and all these complex buildings and deals that are going on are going through the city attorney and Ansel Graham Aaron. If you want to look at Long Branch as an example, the carnage there of all this unfair development and the downtrodden people, the ruined economy, you can thank Ansel Graham Aaron as the city attorneys. Now, they can deny that if they want, but of course, they don't. Now, the other thing, fifty-seven seconds. Santander Building, Presidential Building, 200 Kingsley Building, the schools, the firehouse, the police department, the court and court building, municipal complex, should be not condemned, but should be written up for all the violations. I signed a complaint for all the mold and mildew all over this building that this city manager is allowing the workers to work in. They're crying in tears with the ceiling coming down on them. And basically, what I get from city workers is, uh-uh, don't say anything. It's Michael. They're afraid of Michael. I don't know who Michael is, and I don't really care. I think they're talking about a city manager from out of town, the first one we've had from out of town, who won't send his kids to school here. He won't live here, and yet he's going to turn around and castigate residents like me for 12 years. And I find that horrible. That's my speech.
Thank you.
Next.
Linda Phillips, Deo Lake Drive. I'm here as a part of a group who are making a presentation of a proclamation. It's basically for Black History Month. We want to recognize that we have, the city council and a group of us have been talking over the last year and a half about a proclamation like this. And we've decided that it is the most appropriate way to deal with this proclamation is for us as a community to present it, the city council. We're going to ask people to sign it if you agree with it. And. And we would, we would just want to say we appreciate the work that went on in our conversations with the city council, and we know that there is a broad agreement, general agreement on the ideas, maybe not the language, but the ideas of what is in this proclamation, and we really appreciate the work that you did with us. And so, going forward, this is gonna, we're gonna present a history of disparity, racial disparity, and lack of inclusion, and going forward, our desire as a community to make that better. And so, that's what's gonna happen now. And as each person speaks, we're gonna sign the proclamation.
I'm Conrad Neblet at 1218 Sunset Avenue, and tonight we will present to you this proclamation that is the Diversity Dialogue Group of Asbury Park. We have been working on this for two years. And I'm here to give a brief history of what brings us here today. What originally sparked the creation of the proclamation was that the present, the presenters of the 2017 Master Plan meetings were not racially balanced. The presenters consisted of paid facilitators by the City of Asbury Park and appointed volunteers. These master plan meetings were intended to look 10 years out into the future of Asbury Park and to reach out to its citizens to gain their input. It is, it, it was an unfortunate situation to experience that in a city that is comprised of more than 50% people of color. The presenters, consisting of paid facilitators by the City of Asbury Park and appointed volunteers, were over 90% white. We declare publicly that Asbury Park will be more conscious and inclusive city in all ways, shapes, and forms. As a mark of confirmation, we are inviting citizens to sign the proclamation. By doing so, you will be joining us in declaring that Asbury Park will be a more conscious and inclusive city by the sea for all of its people. And I want to thank everyone who has been, I don't know why I'm nervous. I'm never nervous. I want to thank everybody who has been a part of creating this historic document called the proclamation. Whether you engaged in conversations, writings, or participated in a series of edits, your contributions were truly appreciated. And that includes mayor and council, who are a part of helping to make this a document, a historic document, so we said. With that said, we are proud to announce to the public, and each person here is going to read aspects of the proclamation, and we thank you. And next time, I won't be nervous, but I'm nervous right now, and I'll sign.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
Carrie Butch, Deal Lake Drive. I'm filling in for Pam Lamberton, founding member of the Dialogue Group and one of the driving forces behind this proclamation. Pam recently suffered a fall and is unable to attend tonight's meeting, but just like Pam stepping up last council meeting and reading Reverend Gil Caldwell's letter, I'm stepping up tonight to fill her shoes. Let's take a moment to send her prayers, positive energy, light, and love, and let's love one another. So here we go. Proclamation. We, the residents of Asbury Park, acknowledge over 100-year history of racial and socioeconomic disparity and a lack of inclusion in the city and pledge individually to rectify. Asbury Park was founded in 1871, and the population has always been racially and socio-economically diverse. From the very beginning, the white founders of the town enforced race and class-based segregation, dividing black and white populations by Main Street and the railroad tracks. Lower-income communities of colors on the west side and higher-income white communities on the east side. While there have been strides toward equality, the divide has continued. Even today, the city struggles with redevelopment that is lopsided in favor of the east side and is not always inclusive or beneficial to those on the west side. This was demonstrated at recent meetings where residents were encouraged to provide input to the city master plan. At these meetings, planning for the future of Asbury Park, professionals who were presenting as well as volunteers taking input, were over 90% white. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. Michael Kushner, Fifth Avenue. The villain of this disparity is systemic racism, which gives institutionalized benefits to people of European descent and disadvantage to people of color. This is often referred to as white privilege, Exhibit A. This expression is a term that many white Americans instinctively don't trust or believe to be real. It is a set of unearned assets that white people in America can count on each day but to which many remain oblivious. In areas of health, education, housing, and criminalization, among others, it advantages white people over people of color regardless of wealth, gender, or other factors. Residents feel that if we don't do something now to stem the tide of inequitable redevelopment propelled by white privilege, we will lose the cultural diversity that is the heart and soul of Asbury Park. Thank you.
Thank you.
Catherine Murphy, 510 Deal Lake Drive. Whereas according to census data provided in the 2006 Master Plan, the population of Asbury Park is 76% people of color, but boards, commissions, and city administration are disproportionately white. And?
Thank you.
Felicia Simmons, Soul Avenue, Asbury Park. Whereas by definition, white privilege is a result in cultural advantages in a non-inclusionary manner, and the residents of Asbury Park choose not to support, encourage, or otherwise foster this practice. And?
Thank you.
Joyce Grant, Asbury Tower. Whereas we, the undersigned residents of Asbury Park, continue to practice, explore, celebrate, and share their cultural differences and histories. And?
Thank you.
Bill Stevens, Asbury Tower. Whereas we, the undersigned residents of Asbury Park, recognize that systemic racism has resulted in white privilege and has existed in our country for centuries and in Asbury Park since its founding. And?
Thank you.
Jennifer Sarwa, Ocean Grove resident and Asbury Park business owner. Therefore, we, the undersigned residents of Asbury Park, are seeking to act to eliminate such inequalities and non-inclusionary practices, each in our own way, as our resources and powers allow. And?
Thank you.
Polly Shilga, Fifth Avenue. Therefore, we, the undersigned residents, acknowledge that such inequalities exist today and pledge to take action to overcome such inequities and make Asbury Park a city of inclusion. The vision of signers of this proclamation is to bridge the diversity gap within our beloved city. We are committed to expand our understanding of our cultural differences while deepening our appreciation for each other's cultural upbringing. We will work toward gaining a greater understanding of our similarities and differences with the intention of gaining a heightened sense of compassion and respect for one another. February 2019.
Thank you.
Charles Trot, Asbury Park, Langford Street. Well, it's already been said, tomorrow is the last day of African-American or Black History Month. As you may know, and those who don't know, African-American history is, I do presentations at the library for not only African-American history, but women's history, Asian and Pacific Island history, Hispanic history, and Native American history. So stop out sometime, look at Facebook, and most importantly, in an inclusive manner, which I try to be, come and sign this. It will be circulating throughout the Asbury Park community, and for those who aren't here tonight, they will get a chance. For you that are here tonight, now's your chance.
Thank you.
Kay Harris, Asbury Park Business Owner. I am speaking on behalf of Reverend Gil Caldwell, who is not able to be here this evening. I regret I am unable to be with you this evening. My son Dale and I are speaking tonight at the Red Bank Library in their Let's Talk About Race award-winning series. We are talking about LGBTQ persons and same-sex couples in church and society. This is an historic night in the history of Asbury Park. Some of us have had conversations with city council members about race and diversity. Tonight, the people speak and ask that city council members put on their citizen's cap and sign on to our statement. I ask that the city council begin the process of creating a Human Rights Commission, or using another title, that discusses, plans, and implements programs that deepen our knowledge and understanding of the history, culture, justice, struggles, et cetera, of persons of color and other groups that represent the rich human diversity of Asbury Park. May Asbury Park become a city that is known nationally and worldwide as more than its sea, sand, and sun. The human diversity of Asbury Park is its greatest gift. Reverend Gil Caldwell. And since I have another minute left, I'm going to take this time to promote the Asbury Park Museum, which opened in December. And it's a temporary museum, and we only have a couple of weeks left. It'll be closing on March 10th. And one of our upcoming programs is preserving the history of the Sand Hill Indians, which will be Sunday at 2:00. So I invite you to come. And just, and we are open Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, so please come and learn about. Some of you may be newcomers to Asbury Park and may not be aware of all of the history. So it does include a timeline of the history of Asbury Park back to, back to its founding in 1871. And it also highlights the west side of Asbury Park by presenting the contributions of the west side music industry. And I think you'll find that very interesting. So the whole point of the museum is to show the, the diversity of Asbury Park. It's not just the waterfront, it's all four quadrants. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tracy Rogers, Soul. First, I want to say that we have to start looking at a first step. And we made a historic first step Monday night at the planning board meeting by making sure that we keep residents that are here, seniors, working-class minorities, when we passed a ordinance for affordable housing. And I want to thank the mayor, I want to thank the deputy mayor for being involved in this process, also Yvonne Clayton. But this is also one of the first steps of us realizing. And I believe silence becomes complicity. If we don't stand up and talk about our issues, resolve our issues, and realize that we have a direction that we all want to go in, we will never be able to get there. And the Dialogue Group, the Affordable Housing Group, they have been on the ground each and every day, and all these members are here. And they're willing to work with the council, they're work, they want to be involved with all the community, and we want to have the most diverse and model city in the country. So when we take these steps, we're not looking to be rebel rousers or anything else. What we're trying to do is create an environment that we all want to live in and a place that we all want to be in. And if we all look ahead as to where we want to be, we have to take that first step. So with everyone here coming up and signing, it shows that we want to be in that first step as to where we want to be as a city. Remember in 2002, when that waterfront redevelopment agreement was signed? All the residents were not engaged, and you know what direction that led us to. So please, everybody step up and do what you have to do to take that first step so we can start on this process of bringing this city to the city that we want to be and the model city that we want to have. And the residents, and all of the residents I see here that I work with, that I enjoy, it is a pleasure coming out to these meetings just to see them. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine, I'm gonna have to say you can't speak because the process for many years has been once.
I did not know that.
I'm sorry.
I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank, thank you.
Well, for that, we'll put you back up.
Whisper to somebody else and let them say it.
Hello. My name is Pat McGee and I live at Fourth and Grand. I was up before the board a couple of months ago stating the problems that I have. I just moved here a couple of months ago with my family. We have four kids, and the traffic on Grand Avenue is unbelievable. I sent a video to the mayor and Mike Manzella about a fatal accident, two cars going 40 miles an hour. The car was T-boned, it flipped on its roof. I kicked open the windshield to get the person out of the car. Like I said, it was nearly fatal. I've sent countless emails to Mike Manzella and the mayor, haven't heard anything back at all. I have to keep following up. I hear nothing on, from the city at all about the traffic problem there, about the near fatal accident. I have four kids that have to run across the street on Grand because cars go down 45 miles an hour. I lived in many towns in Monmouth County, Red Bank, Spring Lake. I'm here in Asbury Park now. I've never seen such non-response from a, a city in any, anywhere I've ever lived. I've, I've addressed problems with other, other towns I lived in. It's always been addressed. It seems like here, everyone passes the buck. They say the traffic study's gonna be done. If I don't follow up on this, nothing gets done. And I want to know what's gonna go, what's gonna happen here. You know, you got people paying millions of dollars to live on the oceanfront here. They're gonna, they're gonna drive two blocks to Grand and get cut in half because there's not a blinking light on the corner, there's not even speed bumps on Grand Avenue, there's a hundred, there's so many things that could be done, and nothing gets addressed. And I want to know where we are with any of this stuff right now.
Are, are you done?
I was told the last time that I get response, I get feedback, I get information, nothing.
You're done?
Yes.
Okay. I apologize you didn't get response, feedback, anything. You can stay after the meeting if you want to, and I'll arrange a meeting where I'll meet with you. I've met with you before in City Hall on other issues. I'm willing to meet with you again on this issue, and we'll have Mr. Manzella and whoever else, the police department there. So you tell me the time and date and I'll be there.
I can't stay with this meeting now, but I'll.
Okay, well, you, you have my email, you have my phone number, you've called, you emailed. I did meet with you once before in City Hall about another piece of property you own on, I think Emery Street, so we have met. I'm not adverse to meeting with anybody. I'll definitely meet with you, Mr. Gary. You just send me an email with a couple of dates, it's good for you. I'll forward them to Mr. Manzella to make sure that they're good for him, and somebody from the police department will sit down, we'll talk about it.
Yeah, because it's not a matter of when, and it's already happened. I kicked the windshield in.
It's a matter of when you set up the meeting and I will be there.
Right.
Okay.
Thank you.
My point is, it's not a matter of when something's gonna happen, it already's happened. And there's gonna be more problems with increased traffic in this area. And, and Main Street, now Grand Avenue being used as a main street because Main Street is one lane now.
Okay.
It's gonna get nothing but worse.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Dwayne Small, former Charter Study Commission member. First and foremost, I want to thank.
What's your address, hon, for the record?
Say that again.
Your address for the record, please.
I'm a Charter Study Commission member, that's my address.
Dwayne, you have to give an address.
1304 Madison. John, come on, man, you know the deal, man. I want to thank the people who put this proclamation together. For so long, I've been saying this stuff and been fighting for so long about this stuff that they're speaking about in this proclamation. But I was always considered a rabble-rouser, a troublemaker, a problem. But now people are starting to see exactly what I was saying. If you want to know what's going on right now, and that's all you have to do is look behind you, look at history. It's gonna tell you where you're going. If you don't know the past, you not know, you don't know where you're going. I want to thank y'all for that. John, I want to thank you. John, I want to thank you and the council, Amy, Yvonne, and yourself for coming over there to the press conference on police and community relations. We really need that, you know, and that's a great first step. At the meeting, we found out about why the street crimes unit is not wearing body cameras. We finally got the truth, I guess because the prosecutor was there, huh? Are they going to get body cameras? Are y'all going to put a policy in place to outfit the street crimes unit with body cameras? Because as we know, they are out here violating people's rights all in the name of, we got violence, and we got crime, and all that. But as we know, everybody in the city of Asbury Park is not a criminal, and every black person is not a gang member. Should no one be stopped the way they are being stopped by them? What they doing, like I told you, they playing fish. So my question again, we gonna put them cameras on them, John?
I'm gonna answer the way I've answered you before about this. I appreciate your phone calls, I appreciate your follow-up on everything, and you've never been a pain to me, so... I've been told the mayor and council sets policy, but we cannot set policy on how the police is run, day-to-day operation. So we cannot set the policy you're looking for in our former government. The mayor and council cannot. And the attorneys here, if I'm wrong, so once and for all, this is put to bed because I know I've told you that before, and you believe me, but it doesn't make sense. So if I'm wrong, Fred, correct me.
No, you're absolutely correct, Mayor.
Okay, so then it's up to the city manager, the one who runs the day-to-day operations, can he do it?
I think the chief has to do it.
The chief is responsible for the daily operations of the police department. The city manager serves as the appropriate authority. However, the daily operations of the police department are under the purview of the chief by state statute.
Okay, all right, John, so we know it's the chief. So y'all get together with the chief and sit down with him because we know we have a problem. And let's put them body cameras on them. Now, if he refuses to put them body cameras on them and let you know what a problem lot. So when something does happen... Now, something already happened. An individual came down here today and filed a complaint against one of the street crime members because he broke a screw in his back. So handle that, John, please.
Yes, thank you.
I'm from Cologne, 806 Third Avenue. New resident to Asbury Park. Been out here only 14 months. And since I've been out here, there's always cars barreling down every street that has no traffic light. When I'm in the crosswalk, almost hitting me, like Sunday when I was crossing on Monroe and Prospect, and a supercab cab driver just dead stops right in front of me in the crosswalk. It was just, I didn't know what to do. It was just crazy, like, so I had to curse him out, you know, and keep going because it's bugging. Then the next day, on Monday, between 6:20 and 6:30, which I had made a report with Officer Parisi, this lady in a gold SUV. Again, I'm crossing, I got a bike that is in need of repair. I'm bringing it over to a friend to get fixed. Next thing you know, this lady's just, almost hit me. You know, I don't know what it is with the motorists out here, why they're not, you know, with, trying to be more cautious or trying to prevent injury to people. But something really does have to be done on these streets, you know. And yes, speed bumps should work, you know. That's all I have to say.
Okay, I thank you, and... No, no. I appreciate the second one you called into the police, and hopefully the police will get back to you that one. The taxi cab one, you should also call it in to the police just because they're regulated by the city.
Right, I haven't seen that cab driver, though. That's the only thing, I've been, because the lady...
Okay, and it's, I know it happens fast. They're all supposed to have numbers on their cabs. So anybody sees anything like that, please report it. As far as increasing the traffic lights, I know it's a hot discussion. At one point, Asbury Park per square mile had more traffic lights than any city in Monmouth and Ocean County. And we still have as many as anybody. Like, were some taken off Grand Avenue about in 2010? Yes. Was that smart, then? Maybe yes, maybe they have to go back. The problem is, we're a city that just got off of transitional aid. The cost of a traffic light, one traffic light, is between $350,000 and $550,000 per traffic light.
I'm not asking for another traffic light.
Well, I'm addressing all the other issues also. But you said there should be a traffic light where...
No, no, I didn't say there was, there needs to be a traffic light. I said at every stop that doesn't have a traffic light, or if it's just a regular stop sign or yield sign, those should have the dead man speed bumps, them big humps. You know, those should be there.
If you want to meet one day, I'll meet with you and Mr. Manzella also, and we'll go through that with the police and why they work and why they don't work, and why we can do it and why we can't do it.
And Parisi did take my statement about the cab driver as well. It's just, with the lady on Monday, I got the picture of the license plate, and that was it. I couldn't get his, because I didn't have a camera on me.
Thank you, and I think the police chief's here. If not, could you have him follow up on that, please, Michael? Okay, thank you.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Muma, 1501 Ocean Avenue. I just want to say thank you for the north end boardwalk presentation tonight on behalf of the residents concerned about the waterfront, say Asbury's waterfront. I'm very pleased. I think that you listened to all of the feedback that people gave. And secondly, I'm very proud of all my friends who've worked really hard to form this proclamation. I think it says it all, and I'm going to, yeah, I'm very happy to be your neighbor. None of us in this room were alive when racism was confounded or invented, but we all have the power to dismantle it together, so thank you, friends.
Thank you.
Just gotta start the clock over again. Thank you. Good evening, Dan Harris, 17th Street Avenue, Asbury Park. Only board member. First, I want to thank John and Yvonne for coming to our vigil that we had for children who have been shot and killed in Asbury Park over the last decade. As you know, it was a powerful moment, attended by approximately 80 people from as far away as Trenton. And we got to bond with people from Spring Lake, Mothers Demand Action, who came to Asbury. That was a group that reacted to mass shootings everywhere in the country, but never reacted to shootings here in Asbury Park. And we actually now have a bond because I've gone to some of their meetings, realizing that gun violence affects people differently. The next thing I want to thank you for attending our session that we had, as Duane said at the church, on bringing the community closer together in reference to, let's be honest, police violence on our young people. At some point, that has to stop. And one of the things that I did question at that meeting was our Class 1 officers going through eight to 14 days of training and then being put out on the street. I did ask Officer Casey, did he consider that enough training? And he said, no. So, I mean, we always say we go by the state guidelines, but I think that the city should create their own guidelines so that we have people who are better prepared to walk the streets of Asbury Park, especially in the southwest quadrant and down on the beach when the drunks be getting their little thing on at night, okay? When I look at some of these young police officers that we're hiring, like I said, and what's in the paper, it looks like they're not even shaving yet, all right? So they haven't had life experiences on how to deal with people in difficult situations. Eight days of training is not enough for that. They also don't deal with the cultural differences, but because of state rules, they can go, you know, keep going to bring people from other communities in here that don't understand our children. That needs to be fixed. Finally, I hope I don't run over. It's very nice that we put up monuments for people who died at Sandy Hook, nice little playground on the beach. People who were shot in the nightclub in Florida, nice trees in the park. But for some reason, we've forgotten about the young people who have died from Asbury Park. What I profess and would say, and I'm not gonna say you're gonna listen, but we put a committee together, or a group of people, to somehow memorialize the children... Can I finish?
Finish.
I'm not gonna be long. To memorialize the children who have needlessly died in Asbury Park and make it our goal due to the police department, recreation department, the Board of Education, community policing, and churches, to try to make sure that we have no more children that we have to memorialize. We always take care, memorialize everybody else's, but we always forget about our own. And that's all I'm saying. Thank you very much.
Hold on one second, Louise. Danny, I thank you for all you do, and I thank you for inviting me to all these meetings and everything. Let me just make sure everybody knows the two memorials you're talking about. Not one city penny was paid for either one of them. Being a city on transitional aid, we cannot. So if some group approached us and said, can we have the memorial you're talking about? We would say, absolutely, but you got to find the funding, same as the other two did. So it's, no city dollars were paid for those two things you're talking about.
Then what we'll have to do, we'll put together a group where we use our own money, and then we'll come, and we'll have it done.
It will happen, thank you.
You own the committee.
Okay. But I don't have any money. Go ahead, Louise, I'm sorry.
Good evening, John, mayor and council. A couple of things, but I have to say first, I wasn't even gonna do this tonight, but it really breaks my heart that I have to sit here and hear words like racism, white privilege. I was born and raised in this city. My brother is 88 years old. He was born in the city limits. We lived here. My best years of growing up was living on the west side, among everybody. That was my best years. And to hear everyone sit here and talk about racism and white privilege, it makes me want to throw up. I'll be perfectly honest. Why don't you just get out there and reach out to people instead of just classifying everybody? It just breaks my heart. My brother still lives in this city. He was a mailman, he lives on Sunset Avenue. And if you want to know anything about the history of Asbury Park, ask him, because I think he's walked every inch of this city. I'm here, and I've been here, and I feel so bad, badly, that you people, and I'm saying that, you people did not ever have the experience that I had growing up. To me, it was like a fairyland. I had neighbors, I could walk to school at 7:00 in the morning, pitch black, and never be afraid because I could go in anybody's house if I thought somebody was coming after me. And it never happened, and I lived, I lived on the west side of town. My grandmother had a store on Madison Avenue. And most of her people, most of the people, most of our, the people that supported us with their business were black. And on Easter, we couldn't do anything until she made those baskets for some of those families that didn't have it. It breaks my heart, I'm sick of it. I'm sick of hearing the words, I'm sick of hearing all this other crap about white privilege. I'm done with it, and I will not sign that. Now, we had a meeting, by the way, a while ago about the protesters. Remember, John, me, you, and the city manager? We're like $30,000 in the hole, and I just want to know if we got any money.
Michael?
Yes.
Okay. Have we collected all the money due to us from that?
I think there's one or two that we don't have who went under. The organizations don't exist anymore. But I believe we've collected 99% of it.
So the majority of the money's been collected. From what I'm hearing, the only money's not collected is people that we can't find. And as far as I'm concerned, if we do find them, we'll go after them. If they apply for another special events, we'll be told no.
Okay, well, is there any way I can get like a report of some sort? Because I...
Certainly, certainly, I believe you'd do that. So, Michael, would then, would you give us a week or so? Just because it's gonna have to go from special events to finance, to everything to track it down through the departments. Give us a week or so to get it to you?
Good.
Thank you. Michael, we can do that?
Nothing, thank you.
Ryan Clements, 1521 Fourth Avenue. And I am so glad to hear that we are here talking about racism and white privilege. Because I know several African-American members of this community who tell me that their lived experiences are experiences of being continuously being treated differently than their white neighbors and residents. And that their lived experiences are continuously being, having comments made about them, being followed in stores, of being treated differently because of their color of their skin. And so I am so proud of the Dialogue Group that put together this petition, and I will happily sign it.
You going, Rita?
Hi, Rita Moreno, I wasn't gonna talk about this neither. But all these Johnny-come-latelys, I mean, I've been here since I'm five years old, so I figure I was born here. I had a store on Kingsley Street. 99 and nine-tenths of my customers were black. I don't know what these people are all talking about. I see my customers today, and they embrace me because we had a good business. I think Amy knows all about it, she was in my store. How can people talk the way they are here? They, all Johnny-come-latelys, none of them have ever lived here more than 10 years. Well, whatever. But I'm just telling you, and the other thing is, when Endement Domain came up, I didn't see not one of these people in this audience come to try to help me to keep my business. That's all rhetoric.
Whoa, 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 whoa. No cross-conversations, everybody was polite to every other speaker. Let's get through the meeting without anybody be put out. So Rita, you get another 15 seconds.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, yeah, not one person came to help me save my store, and yet they want us to go around doing all this stuff. It's not necessary. This city is very well-managed right now. Maybe you don't think so, but it is. The other thing is, the West Side Community Center, I didn't see anybody going over there to try to help build that up again. I mean, we've had so much talk about the West Side Community Center. Where is everybody? All these people that signed this petition, they weren't there to help, to keep it open, or whatever. I don't know what status is now, I guess it's closed. But I don't think it's fair to talk the way these people are talking here. This is a beautiful city, and it's very well-managed right now. And I don't get it, what these people are talking about. And the other thing is, on the bill resolution, not to get off the subject, but there's something about approving special events. Now, in the ordinance, it says they have to have everything paid up 10 days before. I don't think you should approve anything until they have their payments made. Because we've had a problem with that. If you approve those things tonight, and they don't have 10 days before paid, they still go on. So I don't think you should approve them until they have 10 days before, and they get approval. They have to pay. These people are getting away with it, and it's not fair.
These people are getting away with it, and it's not fair. And, there was one other thing, I wanted to say, I forgot now, but about Endement Domain, I didn't see anybody in this room come to help me, no way. I don't care what anybody says sitting over here, I know. Nobody came. And, and they took over all the businesses, and we got peanuts. That's all I have to say.
Okay, Rita, as far as the special events, you're right, everybody's supposed to be paid ten days before, we can't wait ten days before to approve an event, to have the money, it would be like, see here or now. Okay, we're going to have an event, but I can't announce my bands and sell tickets like six months from, ahead of time, so, a lot of these events thrive on getting approved, starting to raise the money to pay for the event itself, so, they have to be approved beforehand. Should all money be paid ten days before? Absolutely. Has Fred come in and told the committee that? Absolutely. Is it being done a hundred percent? Absolutely not.
Maybe you should raise that to twenty days. Just to make sure you get your money.
I agree with you.
But we don't always know what the expenses are going into it.
So I was just going to say, sometimes if people think thirty people are going to show up, and three hundred show up, so there's a-
Right, so those numbers are fluid.
That's why we ask for an escrow now.
Okay. Next.
Hi, Charlie Bondis, Drummond Avenue, I'm also coming up to say thank you to the committee who put together this proclamation. Also, you know, I, this is my first time coming to one of these meetings, and I'm really, you know, it's really amazing to see all these different people speaking up and sharing what's going on in the community, I really appreciate what the gentleman raised earlier about the body cameras issue, and I, you know, just as a fellow citizen, want to say that I support that, I feel like that kind of transparency is quite necessary. But I think what I most wanted to say coming up here, in addition to thanking the committee, was to say thank you, because everybody who's come up here and spoken today has shown, in some way, shape, or form, why this conversation is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close.
Hi, Beth Stuckey, Deal Lake Drive, this is my second meeting, I've been an owner since August, and a renter prior to that, before I decided to buy into Asbury Park. And I have to say, I grew up in the Bronx, I grew up in a diverse neighborhood, that changed its diversity through the years, I moved to another part of the Bronx, I lived through the racially charged times of the sixties and seventies, I went to a primarily black and somewhat Hispanic high school. Hard times, I chose in my life, since my upbringing, to move, to raise my children in a diverse area where I lived for thirty-four years, and I looked around a lot before I decided to leave there and come here. I've been a little concerned about the direction I thought I saw Asbury going in, I hadn't seen part of it when I bought in, and I was a little concerned, and the last meeting, I expressed that. What I saw tonight, and what I heard tonight, and I'm a wannabe activist, but I have to admit, I've been pretty busy since I've moved in, and have not done my share, but I will say that everybody has their own lived experience, and you can't say it's this way or that way, whether you were brought up here, or you weren't brought up here, everybody has their own experience, and I, what I see tonight, and what I see with the proclamation, and what I'm hearing, is that we do need to work together, and whether you experienced it or you didn't experience it, you know, not that it doesn't matter, of course it matters, but what matters is that everybody listen and hear what everybody else has to say, and then want to proclaim to make it better, and, you know, just because you didn't have that, doesn't mean it didn't happen, and just because you did have it, doesn't mean you can't share that person's pain, or maybe their wonderful upbringing, and they didn't have that. I'm very, very, very honored to live in this community, and tonight's meeting reaffirmed my decision to buy here, and I am very happy to hear what's going on with the boardwalk, I know there's other concerns, there's this concern, there's the concern about the pool club, there's concerns about other things that still have to continue, I hope to find and make more time to become a part of the process, and I hope that everybody sitting here sees it that way, and wants Asbury to be everything it can be, and to be a light unto the rest of the nation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move to close.
Second.
All favor?
Okay.
All opposed? Alright, we'll move on to minutes, we have three sets of minutes this evening, we have executive session minutes of February thirteenth, 2019, workshop minutes of February thirteenth, 2019, and regular session meeting minutes of February thirteenth, 2019. Count a motion to approve the minutes, please.
Move it.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
No problem, if you want to continue having the proclamation signed, no problem, let's just keep the talking down so we can finish the meeting, thank you.
We have the agenda resolutions, Resolution 2019-89, Resolution approving special events, Resolution 2019-90, Resolution to refund overpaid taxes for 1706 Park Avenue, and 2019-91, Resolution requesting permission of dedication and rider for revenue derived from donations. Count a motion to approve, please.
Move it.
Second. Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to individual resolutions, Resolution 2019-92, Resolution amending temporary budget appropriations for 2019 budget, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-93, Resolution approving payment of bills, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
No.
Whoa.
Sorry about that. No.
Resolution 2019-94, Resolution amending a contract for installation of playground equipment, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-95, Resolution authorizing use of contracts with approved AMEA Partners Government Purchasing Alliance National Co-op vendors, may I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-96, Authorizing new order contract regarding operations of seasonal concessions regarding surf lessons, can I have a motion, please?
And this is to Summertime Surf LLC.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-97, Authorizing new order contract regarding operations of seasonal concessions involving rental pedal boats on Wesley Lake.
And this is Dazbury Park Pedal Boat Sunshine Productions LLC.
Count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-98, Authorizing new order contract regarding operations of seasonal concessions involving rental umbrellas, beach chairs, and other items.
And this award would be to PIMCO LLC.
Motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-99, Award bid of print services, can I have a motion, please?
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-100, Resolution authorizing purchase of ammunition and targets for the police department, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-101, Resolution authorizing the purchase of one hot water coils and HB-4 air handler for the wastewater treatment plant, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-102, Appointing various firms to provide architectural services for the city, and authorizing the execution of agreement for professional architect services associated therewith, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Comments or questions?
Name the firms, please.
Michael?
It's DMR Architects and Neta Architects.
Correct.
Thank you.
Just for the public, yeah.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-103, Resolution approving second amendment to the redevelopment and land disposition agreement, buy-in between the City of Asbury Park as a redevelopment entity and Interfaith Neighbors, Inc., count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2019-104, Resolution of the mayor and council of the City of Asbury Park, acting as the redevelopment entity, granting an amendment to conceptual approval to Asbury Partners LLC regarding the summer experience installation on Block 3802, Lot 1, and to continue the sign installation on Block 4004, Lots 2 and 3, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate approvals, count a motion, please.
Move it.
Second. Any comments or questions? Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Move on to ordinance's introduction, ordinance 2019-11, Ordinance amending the central business district redevelopment plan, can I have a motion to introduce us, please?
Move it.